So I'm going to call the meeting to order. And we'll start with the pledge and Danny has volunteered to lead the, well, to say the pledge tonight. And if you want to say it along, you could mute yourself and pledge along. Go ahead, Danny.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we'll go on to our roll call. Mary Kay?
Okay. Andy, Mary?
Yes.
Jim Balder?
Here.
Mike Boldy?
Here.
Bill Deep?
Here.
Janie Long?
Here.
Jessica Mead?
Here.
Mary Newfield? Danny Pyatt?
Here.
JD Schrader? Okay, it looks like Mary and JD have not joined us.
Okay. And then we'll go on to, is there any public comment?
I haven't received anything, no.
Okay. And then we'll go right on to new business. We got board member meeting and legislative stuff and I asked Mary Kay to put this excellent in teaching program, open house flyer on. Just as a reminder, CISA started this program three years ago and the first year they had 12 students, the second, no, the first year they had seven, the second year 12. And this year they have 30 some, I think 32.
Oh.
And so the program's been really successful. I think 10 of those students this year are special ed people getting, so they can be special ed teachers. And I don't know if we have hired anybody out of that program or not, but
We have.
It's been a good thing for CISA.
We have, and I wanted to let you know I agree with everything you're saying, Andy. I worked with those roughly 30 this past month in April on a Saturday. I was invited to virtually spend time with other superintendents and those non-traditional educators and they are bringing a lot to the table. They're a strong group.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything else they would like to report on either from a legislative point or any meeting somebody may have attended? And if not, we'll go on to the COVID update.
Okay, thank you. Jake, I think you are, you've joined us, correct?
Yep.
Would you like to provide any building updates?
Yeah, so the big milestone that we reached through the COVID world was we were able to get all the staff members into all the buildings for end of the year checkout type procedures and gathering of personal items. So that was a big step to help us continue with their summer work and allow the teachers to continue with their virtual learning. So I'm pretty happy that we got that coordinated. The principals and the secretaries have been back in the buildings for the most part, working on a part-time schedule at least to help coordinate that and schedule that. And that has gone very well. So I want to thank them all for helping with that. Really, when you look at the number of staff that we have, we got them in and out of the buildings probably within a seven day window. So that was really a good undertaking by them. Just so you know, we did trace everybody when they came in, the dates, the locations they went. So if there becomes any question on if somebody tests positive, we do know who was where at what time. So that's a big piece of that too. So thanks to all of them. As far as my staff, we're plugging right along, getting a lot of the summer cleaning done, waxing floors, getting carpets extracted. And we started on the remodel of the the family consumer ed room, which is the food prep area that Tracy Frisch has been expanding very well over the last couple of years. And she got the grant to do a full commercial kitchen that we brought to you a few months back for the approval of that. So we have the plumbing and the electrical getting roughed in right now. And we'll be doing the epoxy floor that we got money for through the grant from Remington Foundation. So that will be in the next week or two. And then we'll be at a good milestone on that. So we're really moving along nicely on that. At the elementary schools, we are ripping out all the old coat hooks and getting that work started for the new Coveys to come in. I talked with Ken Brooks, which is the painter that has been helping us work through the middle school. He's done a very nice job of coaching us and helping us and allowing us to do the stuff that we can do. So we can provide a lot of the labor in-house to keep the costs significantly lower. And then he helps us with the technical parts of that. So he's been very helpful through the whole process over the last year and a half on that. Asbestos abatement over at West is going to be starting next week, I believe, the 18th, if I have my numbers right. Yep. So that should be way ahead of schedule as well. And then at the middle school, they are starting to pull out lockers. And that really brings us to our next hurdle as far as getting any of the items that the students have left in their lockers back to them. Clint will touch on graduation a little bit, but we're going to use that opportunity to get items back to the seniors. At the elementaries and the middle school, we have slated for next week, the 20th, to pick up curbside items that we are bagging and tagging and organizing and getting ready. So we'll get all those items back. Clint and I talked pretty in-depth about what it's going to look like for 8/11. And we don't have those plans in stone yet, but we're tentatively thinking the 4th for some of those items. And the reason we may be a little later on that is because of Chromebook and/or textbook stuff with them. So we're trying to coordinate it so that we can pick or drop off items as few times as possible. So it's kind of been hectic, to say the least, to try and get everything organized. But I think given the circumstances, we've been doing pretty good with that. And I think we're ahead of schedule on a lot of things. So overall, I'm, I'm pretty happy with everything that we can control. And my staff has been doing a wonderful job. So any questions on my end?
Okay, thank you, Jake. Food deliveries continue and they will continue through the last scheduled day with students, which remains June 5th. And then we will continue to have food distribution at the high school through the entire month of June. So that's the food service schedule. Any questions about that?
No, just a comment, Julie. It's been kind of nice from my vantage point here on second half, watching the little bus drive by every morning or afternoon and dropping off some food for people. So it's nice to see that. It's a good, good thing to see it out in the community and stuff and to keep the guys at Malleat busy too.
I think so too. And I don't know if you caught any on social media, but the families really thanked not only the bus drivers, but the support staff members who ride the buses to deliver the food during teacher appreciation week. So they had nice messages and even gifts for them. And so that was great to see as well. Okay, Tom Zamzo, any summer school updates since the initial thoughts you shared two weeks ago?
Yes, if, last time I shared that we're going to have a very abbreviated summer school offering mainly for high school credit recovery. And that we are purchasing learning packets, reading packets for students in grades K through five. And thanks to working with Cindy Hodak, who shared the resource with me. And we're waiting for a quote on that. That would be funded through our summer school budget. And she also shared with me that there is a math option, but we are, we're looking at that. If that would be a possibility to offer too. The hope is that once the order is in place, we're looking at a delivery time of around early July. So giving that month of June off and then hopefully students receiving those packets in early July. And those are, it's a series of seven books with themes associated with social and emotional growth and development. And in a variety of other online, there's some online resources also that students can access. In our planning for the credit recovery, had several meetings with the with, first of all, we met with Jason Gomes and Ben Kessler, Gail Moore. They are the key instructors for those credit recovery courses and received their feedback. And then met with high school administration and then early this morning with Anita and Bree Kratz, one of the high school counselors. So we're looking at, starting right, right beginning of June, June 8th through the 25th. Bree shared that the learning platform that we're using or that the high schools had mentum, and they are offering free online learning service through the month of June. So if we are able to, and the high school's working on generating a letter and reaching out to students who would need the credit recovery course, that would be no cost using this learning platform. So Jason, Ben and Gail are all on board. They're ready to go. And we're looking forward to at least offering that for this summer for our students that catch up. And that would be both offering first and second semester courses that they would need to take. So that's where we stand right now with summer school.
Thank you, Tom.
Yep.
Amy, is there anything you would like to add? I know Jake touched on students and the process to retrieve their materials. Is there anything you would like to add?
Hi, everyone. Not really. Jake touched on many of the points. I just wanted to also say in the planning to kind of close out the year with our staffs and our students, we are hand-delivering or mailing some of those packets that you may have heard of that we created for the students. If they weren't picked up and also communicating with families if they have a desire for a drop off or mailing for that. And then also schools are working, oh, I'm hearing that I'm hard to hear. Is that better?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. I was just saying that we are working on delivering the packets to families who would like the printed materials. And the schools are working individually on how to kind of do a send-off for the summer. So if that's a final newsletter of sorts to close out the year with some continued activities and some farewells to the students. We're working on that as well. And I just want to note, as many of you did know, last week was teacher appreciation week. So thank you for your kind words you had shared with the teaching staff. This is a year unlike any other and they're very appreciative of the acknowledgement and really some high spirits in a time that's kind of uncertain. So thank you for that and just want to keep them in the forefront of all the hard work they're doing.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, Clint, any updates on our May 31st graduation? Before I turn it over to Clint, I'll answer that question in part. You may have recently read that the health department, the state health department has come out with guidelines promoting a virtual graduation. And I've been contacted twice already today about how a graduation parade is not in line with health department suggestions. And actually it is. I reread it carefully today. And they suggest two models if we do have a parade of sorts. And we are in line with those models. If anyone gets out of a car, it would be the senior only, no handshaking. So we would be very cautious and definitely stay in line with our local health department. I know Jake's been in touch with them. And also the police department Clint has already been in touch with. So now that I shared that, Clint, anything you would like to add?
Just that Darlene Janson is again reaching out to the health department just to confirm that our plans are in line with their recommendations. And about seven minutes, 10 minutes ago, just before this meeting started, I just got off the phone with Officer Schilling, just confirming that they're aware of our plans and Officer Schilling has those plans and he's going to chat with Chief Roller, whom both plan to be on the grounds during the May 31st virtual or the drive-through, I should say, graduation ceremony. So we're continuing to monitor those guidelines and we'll follow those recommendations. But we really want to offer something for our seniors that day.
Thank you, Clint. Any questions there?
Well, Clint or Tom, I just have a question on credit recovery. Are you anticipating that there will be more or fewer or about the same number of students as usual who need credit recovery?
That number right now is higher than in years past. And we are still trying to work to lower that number and get the kids as much, whatever contact they need in order to complete some of those last remaining credits and graduation requirements like our senior portfolio and our civics exam. We have, we have three Anago High School kids and one AIM student left to take the civics exam. It was nine, I believe, last time we talked. But Mr. Dukach and Mrs. Maddick are working to get those kids and finish that requirement as well as do anything we can for those credit classes. But we are going to have right now, as of right now, that number for credit recovery is going to be higher than in years past.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions regarding the school closure that we can answer at this time?
So Julie, about the graduation, are we still looking at August 2nd? I just read in the newspaper yesterday that that's also the fair weekend.
It is, yes. So it is, it remains on our calendar, Dr. Deep. And when I had a number of meetings on Friday with superintendents and legislators, you know, people are growing increasingly convinced that those types of activities will be canceled. The question was, give us a date that we can have large gatherings. And nobody has that information readily available. We even met with the head of the health department, a lady whose name escapes me right now. But you know, those hard questions that are on everyone's minds, we simply don't have answers to. So even she suggested it's okay to have it scheduled. And as information comes, becomes available, we may have to cancel.
Yeah, because I think if you're trying to do the physical distancing, I thought Langley County Fairgrounds had a lot more area than the fieldhouse in case we were going to have regular graduation in person.
Mm-hmm. And we had talked about the football field too.
Yeah. Those might be options where we can space them out.
Right.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions on this COVID? And Dr. Deep, would you like to speak a little bit on how Langley County manages to stay at zero here?
I don't know. It's in the water. You might die of something else. I think part of it is the less movement of people across and we haven't had those huge gatherings or anything like that. I don't know if things might change if weather's starting to get warmer and people from southern Wisconsin and Illinois might start coming up to their lake homes as long as they don't interact a whole lot with people in the stores and gas stations, et cetera. Maybe we might keep it that way. But it's really encouraging because right now we are, the only two counties along with Taylor County, which does not have any cases reported as of now. I knew that we had Forest and Lincoln for a while and last week both of them recorded some cases. But I think we, we have been on the forefront of this. I think the people have been very responsive to it. Some of the stores, it would probably be helpful as restrictions are relaxed. If they would probably mask and try to be a little more careful. But so far, I think I'm really encouraged with what we are seeing and hospitals are opening up, surgeries are opening up. So that's good news for the people. And hopefully we have more testing done. I know that Governor Evers wants 85,000 tests a week. And I think the estimate they had for Langley County was 288 tests a week. That they could do it, but again, they won't give us the equipment. They would like us to use the National Guard who will come with that equipment to test on their own.
How many tests have we had in Langley County?
We are not having a whole lot in our probably I'd say in the past week, we probably had 50 or 60 tests. They've been averaging somewhere in there, the respiratory clinic averages anywhere from four to six cases a day. That's this special clinic that you come in from the CHAP Center, the fitness center entrance. And in-house, if somebody's admitted, maybe you're getting maybe one or two a day at the most. So right now the guidelines are calling only for people with symptoms to be tested. And now they've sort of relaxed it. They want people with any one symptom like a headache or a sore throat or body aches, anything to be tested. And it is free to the people that, they're not supposed to bill it to their, to the people per se, but it should be to their insurances. Or if they don't have insurances or if they're self-pay, then under the CARES Act, any organization that takes that money from the federal government has to provide it free of charge. So hopefully the, the expanded testing might help us quite a bit too as we move into opening up businesses and our schools, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments on COVID?
Andy? Andy?
Mary has it.
It's me. Hey. I don't know if this is the time to bring it up, but when you were talking about the the summer school credit recovery, I've had a couple of people reach out to me that at the high school, they've had, their kids have had no contact with a couple of different teachers and they're kind of concerned about it. No, I don't know, face to face or, and some, one of the mothers said that she, the daughter had emailed the teacher and there was, it's like, there's no contact. And then she said, and they're collecting a paycheck. And I said, yeah, well, that's, you know, I mean, I don't know.
I would say that the, if they don't have any contact, they should be emailing Clint.
Clint, get ahold of Clint. Okay.
Is that correct, Clint?
I was just going to make that comment, Andy. Thank you.
Okay, will do. Thanks.
And yeah, otherwise I've heard good things about teachers contacting students, but
I've heard, you know, I've heard a lot of good stuff, but then just the last couple of days, a couple of people have mentioned. And it was up at the high, you know, nothing at the elementary level and nothing at the middle school. Every, you know, the comments I heard were about the high school.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I think with that, we can move on to the business office budget report.
So Andy, at this point of the year on the budget calendar, I'm typically working on next year's budget in earnest. And at the previous board meeting, I sent you examples of the three scenarios I'm working under. And later in the agenda, Will, Julie has provided you with a document regarding the compensation plan. And later in the meeting, we'll talk about health insurance renewal. So those are two big pieces going forward. I feel really behind at this point. Normally I would just, just have things in order and I would know where the state budget is going to be for Anago. I can tell you what I wanted to present a little bit tonight is talk about how I think the year end for the current school year is going to go. So you know, we've, we've told principals that the major orders had to be submitted by April. So we've extended it a little bit under some extenuating circumstances because of unknowns associated with COVID. But I can tell you that from a supply standpoint, without looking too deeply at Jake's budget area and the impact of, it seems like a cooler spring than normal. I'd like to look at his utility history. But I think, Will, for non-salaries, we're going to finish the year out with, because of not having kids in building and principals and teachers spending on supplies and materials, I'm thinking we're going to probably have $300,000 to $400,000 in additional money that we will put towards the fund balance. Likewise, on the salary and benefit side of things, again, because of things like summer school, you know, not having face to face and paying teacher and aide salaries or reducing that, we will have a savings there between $75,000 and $100,000. Substitutes, you know, we haven't been paying substitutes with, under COVID. And that savings is probably going to be between $120,000 and $140,000. As well as the, I had told you, the, with the salary budget, had a little extra in it to the tune of about 200. So all in, the salary side of things, I'm thinking is going to be between $400,000 and $450,000 in savings. So it, I, I think that we'll see that $700,000 to $800,000 area to be putting that in fund balance. The concerns I have as we go forward, you know, we talked about the compensation plan and making adjustments and using some of those funds for future adjustments on the compensation side. But what the board has to realize is if we spend less money this year, we receive less state aids. Which means there's the potential for a slight uptick in local taxes because we won't be receiving aides on those expenditures. So just know there's an impact and So just know there's an impact and. It might mean next fall that rather than have declining tax rate. We may have a slight uptick and I, at this point, I don't know what that number is. It could, I could see it being twenty-five cents. Something like that, but we will not know that number until October. And, you know, Julie and I have been in conversations regarding where the budget's going. And maybe Julie, you wanna comment about what you heard last week in comparison to what my colleagues are thinking. With regard to the November election.
Yes, on Friday, the sentiment from John Forster seemed to be that. A budget repair bill will not be forthcoming, at least until after the election, so. We were encouraged again to really not put a freeze necessarily on spending, but. Don't look to add anything new to budgets, be very conservative until we have a clear picture. Of what that budget will look like.
Okay. Hey, Tim, as opposed to putting all that money in fund balance, are we gonna put any in that capital fund? Um, I forget what fund number that is, the one where we leave it for five years before we use it?
Andy, it's Fund Forty-Six and that's a probably gonna be, and maybe we can talk about that. Jake is smiling if you don't see that. The the good part about that is the impact, because those funds will be available next July one. For expenditure and we can claim aids on them this year. So through that forecast analytics program, I can run a couple scenarios. And I can have that ready for next, the next committee or the whole meeting. And let's take a look at that. And we have, I believe, until. Um, July thirtieth to make a decision on that for this current budget year.
So are you saying the five years is up and we can put money in and take it right back out?
Um, in, I'm sorry, in July of next year. So we have one additional year yet.
Yeah, okay.
One year.
Okay, anything else? On the budget report?
That's it.
Any questions? Uh, then we will move on to the Certified Staff Compensation Model Report.
So I wanted to include this in your board packet so you could see what I shared with. All certified staff on May sixth. And again, it is, this is not our hope. We were hoping. That we can add salary increases certainly, but we do have to be realistic and I wanted. All certified staff to know that it is a possibility we would be status quo. Until we know more, that's what I wanted to share with them. That does not mean, however. That the work of that salary committee that we had, it was an informal committee. But we had a lot of good feedback from approximately thirty members. And we will move forward on those improvements to the salary model. Um, and we can start those for next year right away. For example, phasing out the professional development as it is tied to dollars. Um, everyone agrees professional development is necessary. But our system of linking it to increases has been clunky and inequitable at best, so. Those things we can move ahead and anyone earning a raise with that will absolutely realize that raise. Um, as soon as we can fiscally and responsibly give it.
Okay. Any questions from anyone on that?
Yeah, I wanted to talk about that, cuz. I mean, if we found a different model, if that one's clunky for the professional development. I would just as soon do that. But I mean, from my own experience, if you're working and you just get raises across the board, there's no. Incentive to do better or better yourself. When you can make the same as a coworker who doesn't apply themselves the same. And I would rather that we. Have the educators continually learning under standards that we set as opposed to, you know. If they don't have any standards, they might do professional development, but they might not and they might be. Less current or relevant. So I would really like to see the professional development piece stay in there.
We did talk about that. And it kind, you speak along the same lines as the certified staff did, some of whom are on the call here tonight, but. That those who believe in professional development are doing it. We have. Some who have just exploded with points. They're, the points they've earned have become meaningless because they have so many. So that kind of intrinsic motivation and that desire to learn and improve your craft. Um, we do have data to suggest that will continue. And then as evaluators. If I am a supervisor of a staff member that I know needs work. Or help with classroom management, let's say. Then I would assign that teacher to professional development too. Continue using that. It's just that that one-to-one correlation. In the years it's been in place, we hadn't found to be fair or consistent. But we'll keep you informed as we move ahead.
Can I just say one thing, Julie, regarding that? Um, just to speak to the clunkiness, I don't, and to your comments, Jessica. It's not an either or as far as professional development or no, you know, all of it or none. But I was the one that was really entering and working with staff for these ninety hours. I mean, if you think about it in terms of. How many hours they were trying to get in and we couldn't even offer as much as what they needed to get. And so it became, instead of being really targeted PD for staff, whether that be for all staff or some staff, it just became. What can we offer to try to help them get some professional development? And so it's not about, from my perspective. It's not about that it's not important, it's absolutely important, but I think we have an opportunity to refine it. And to make it more meaningful and so from the clunkiness perspective. I've been doing it with the staff for two years and it's, it's been a struggle, so.
Okay.
So Andy, I have a couple of questions about that.
Yeah.
Uh, obviously, I haven't been on the board as, as long as some of you have. I thought that before any kind of compensation changes were to be presented. That the board was supposed to have known about those changes beforehand. But maybe I'm wrong on that and I'm okay. I've been wrong before. But so my question then to Julie becomes. So what is your plan for professional development for going ahead if we go with this plan?
So you would be apprised and approve any changes to the. Model before they're made? That you're correct on that, Danny. And secondly. If you look at like our elementary teachers and literacy, they have received. So many hours of professional development with our balanced literacy model, so. It will continue to be at the core of what we do. It just won't be tied to a number of points per se.
So which group of teachers have a hard time getting these points that it's unfair for? Who do you consider that the old system is unfair for here?
Um, I would say that those who. Um, coach or advise activities, they have a very difficult time. And as you know, it's becoming increasingly difficult to find people to take on those responsibilities because the. They're time-intensive, but the pay is minimal. So then when they do that and they do a good job, it really doesn't leave. I mean, it's hours after their eight-hour day, so it doesn't leave them any time. To work on professional development, additional hours, unless it would be late at night or on the weekends. And we're not, we're not trying to have someone take it just to take it. We want it to be meaningful. And authentic.
And the majority, the majority of the hours that were earned were in the summer. When you look at it, that was when the most time where people could as far as when you just look at the. The, the amount of hours that people were able to get. They weren't able to get. A lot of hours during the school year because it had to be after it's outside of the school day. Um, so it hit coaches and advisors harder, but it was even for teachers. It was that didn't advise or coach. It, it was just difficult. You know, you're talking thirty hours a year outside of the school day. And many went above and beyond, so I mean.
That's a good point, Heidi. In the summer, we still plan to compensate. There is a. Curricular rate for hours put in, approved hours put in during the summer. We do pay an hourly wage for that, so. And the committee felt comfortable with that because it's consistent and one size, you know, fits all there.
So are teachers doing professional development right now, more than, more than usual?
Well, they are, but I wouldn't say more than usual, Andy. Probably more than usual because they're not in session. Um, if that answers your question, but what we did not do is. Really pile on the professional development simply because we're in a closure. We wanted to be really respectful of employees. You know, their own mental health and their, the stressors that each one of us has. Related to COVID nineteen, and so we wanted it to be reasonable and meaningful and not just. You know, well, you're at home not doing anything. We felt that was a very dangerous message because. As you know, so many of them are doing all they can to help our students.
They aren't earning, just to clarify too, they're not earning PD hours during this time though. The PD that we are asking them to do is part of their workday. And then that's required. Yeah, so.
Okay.
So the letter. Then Andy, if I could make one, one final comment, Julie and I and Melanie Ryan reviewed. The status of where people were at just a week ago. And there were classroom teachers that I, you know, from my perspective, seemed to be very outstanding. Teachers that may have switched to a new position within the last three years. And we're developed, you know, we're spending a significant amount of time with just classroom preparation and curriculum within the classroom. That may or may not have had an opportunity to do PD hours. And I'm not trying to make excuses for them, but. Um, we did see individuals that fit that case.
That's a really good point, Tim, that you bring up. There was a lot of professional development through literacy. That was done during the school day, whether they got subs or whether it was on the job, embedded coaching. So, and and they weren't earning hours for that. It was, it was something that they were getting, even outside of the closure. So, you know, and and the other point about during closure. Um, a lot of our teachers are doing a lot of professional development right now just to be able to do their job virtually. I know the counselors can attest to this, the speech-language pathologist, all the, you know, and and regular ed teachers are. Learning platforms and and they're, so it's, we didn't wanna pile on more. We did do some, but they're doing. A lot of professional development right now just to be able to provide services through closure. So.
Okay. Any other questions or comments there?
Well, I just think it sounds like we know exactly where we need to improve, but I would still disagree about removing it from the compensation model.
Okay.
So the letter that we have in our board packet, that letter was already sent out to all the staff? Before we knew that this letter was out there?
Well, of course, because it isn't definite. It was simply giving them a heads up. They'd been wondering because they read the news too and people are worried about income. Um, so we wanted to give the most. Accurate message we could without any final decisions.
Okay, so we will have more on this at a future meeting.
Correct.
Yes. Okay, any other questions or comments before we leave that? Okay, then we will go to item E, which is Text Steps Grant Presentation.
Hi, everyone. This is Bree Krutz. I'm one of the high school counselors. Thank you for having me at your meeting tonight. Kelly Leback and myself have been working on what's called the Text Steps Grant for over a year and a half now. We received this grant. And this, it was a large grant and the purpose of the grant was to create a bridge for our senior students between their high school days. And successfully getting them into the seats in college and whatever college they choose. So just to quickly tell you about the program. What we do is we ask the students for their permission to text them a couple times throughout the summer. These texts are very blanket, but like, have you registered for new student orientation? Have you registered for your classes? All of the things that seem very. Standard, but sometimes get lost in the shuffle, especially this year, some of those things will likely get lost in the shuffle. And then we end our text messages right before their fall semester starts. This last year, they were still able to ask us questions. Um, via this texting platform and we did have some students in the fall who would ask us questions, so it was nice to hear from them and help them answer their questions. Um, so I had Mary Kay just kind of attach a very brief document and breakdown for you. I know that when I presented last time, I gave you like twenty pages of information and I think it was just a lot to kind of weed through. And kind of muddle through. So I broke it down just very generally for you. So I started. With the twenty nineteen class information. So we had a hundred and sixty-five graduates. That's a hundred and sixty-five students who earned their diploma. The total number of students from those hundred and sixty-five that enrolled in college was one hundred of those one hundred and sixty-five. I did put a little information there. So college, how I gathered this data was through the National Student Clearing House. And college in their definitions is any public or private two- or four-year university. I make that distinction because we do have some people that go to the Aveda Institute or are in apprenticeships or something like that. Those students aren't counted in this percentage, so just wanted to make that distinction for you guys. So as you guys can see, the total college enrollment rate for the twenty nineteen graduating class was sixty-one percent. Um, I then wanted to kind of break down and just show you some of the effectiveness of the Tech Steps program itself. Um, we had sixty-two students of those one hundred and sixty-five that participated in the Tech Steps program. And of those that participated in the program, fifty-six of those enrolled in college. So that's a ninety percent success rate. What I think is kind of interesting about that is that we always have students that are on the fence, but last year Kelly and I saw students that would. Opt out of the texting. And then opt back in and say, I'm just kidding, I do wanna go to college. Can you help me answer my questions? Um, so it was really. So it was really nice that the communication was two ways. They were able to ask questions, we were able to ask them questions and really help them get to the meat of what their issue was. And answer the questions that they had. I also included for you in the report, this is from the National Student Clearinghouse. This is the top ten schools that our graduates attend. So you'll see here that NTC is our number one school. The total number on the side, I put like as many years as possible as I could into this National Student Clearinghouse. I went back eight years of data. So that total number is all of the years in National Student Clearinghouse. So just to make that distinction for you as well. But you can see that NTC, we've got a great partnership with all of our University of Wisconsin schools. You know, we're, we're working on improving those partnerships as much as possible. Attendance at these colleges varies year to year. I know that our UW Stevens Point representative came out probably fifteen times this year. He's like, we're just not getting students to apply this year, what's going on? It, it was just an off year for UW Stevens Point, so he'll keep at it and our students will go there just at a different year. Any questions so far?
Bree, well, if we wanted to look at the number of students from each year, instead of compiling them all, all eight years together, is that in your incredibly detailed report?
Did you see my note at the bottom Andy? For those who just. I can probably get that information for you and provide it for you at a, in like a document or something, I can share it with you guys. How many years do you want me to go back Andy?
For me, just, I'm gonna say three. It's like before you started doing this compared to doing it.
Yep, I'm just making a note for myself. I'll compile that and I'll get it to you as soon as I can. Cause yeah, you're right. This compiles all the years.
On that note Bree, that statement that you made at the end of the incredibly detailed report.
Yes.
That was a very incredibly detailed report. I enjoyed it though, there's a lot of information.
Yeah. I, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be honest with you, while I'd love to take credit for that, the National Student Clearinghouse, I press a button and they compile that whole thing for me. So that, it's a subscription, but that subscription is absolutely worth our money to pay for to get that information on our students. Even just as if Danny, you said that you clicked on it, you can see our class of two thousand twelve graduates. How many of them actually graduated, how many persisted each year? It's, it kind of makes me happy how much data there is, but other people are very scared of it. So I understand that it's a lot, but it's great to look at.
So last year we only had a hundred and sixty-five graduates?
Yep, so what I did, Dr. Deep, is I pulled from Infinite Campus a diploma date from the twenty nineteen class, senior class. And I counted a hundred and sixty-five students received their diploma.
Wow, I thought we had a hundred and ninety-some.
I don't believe, from the report I pulled it said a hundred and sixty-five, maybe I, maybe I did it wrong.
I don't think we have had such low numbers in a while. I think we have run in the one nineties to two hundred and four, two hundred and twelve range. That one sixty-five is way too low in my opinion.
So I just did a really quick search on Infinite Campus. When I look at just the twelfth grade from the eighteen, nineteen school year, there's a hundred and eighty-eight students on there. But that includes even students that were enrolled for a short period of time during the school year. So that's why I ran the diploma date.
The people who completed the four-year high school here in Anago?
If they were enrolled at any point during last school year as a twelfth grader, they would be counted in that one hundred and eighty-eight students that I just said. But when I ran the one sixty-five number I got was any student who received a high school diploma or equivalency diploma. And I think it was six-two of twenty nineteen. So, that's where I got my number from.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions before I kind of dive into what we're doing this year to help the program?
Just on Dr. Deep's comment there, you know, I know we have something like a ninety-five percent graduation rate. So that one sixty-five and that one eighty-eight somehow doesn't match up. And if you or Clint would like to send us a little more information on that. So we could understand that.
I'm guessing it has to do with maybe cohorts Clint? Because we have rolling cohorts of students that enter and then exit and graduate. I'm guessing it might have something to do with that because maybe they're a fifth year, they get their diploma later. I'm just wondering, because you ran it based on date of diploma.
But then they're held over from the previous year, then if that's the criteria.
I'm, I'm just wonder, I'm just brainstorming of what they might want to look at and why there might be a discrepancy. Does that include?
Semester graduates, I don't know if that was included in that number Bree.
Exactly, I, I think there's.
Graduated semester, so I still think we probably are missing about twenty-five, thirty people on there.
Clint, can you just look into that with Bree and just send us an email?
Sure.
Okay, we won't make you figure it out right here on the spot.
I could try.
Anything on Bree?
Yeah, I do just want to talk about kind of, we are doing this program again this summer. This is the last summer that the grant is covering. I know that, you know, we just had a very detailed discussion about how the budget is very tight and money is very scarce. If we ever get to a position where we could do this again, I think that it would be a great thing for our students if we could continue this program. But, that being said, our twenty twenty graduate information. We have two hundred and five students in the senior class this year, which is a pretty drastic jump. We have implemented a survey with these students to see who would be interested in participating in the Tech Steps program. So far, of the ninety-one people who've responded, we have fifty-seven people who want to participate. Which is awesome, we're still working on getting the rest of the class to respond. But the fact that we have fifty-seven already and only half of a response rate is pretty awesome. Things that we're kind of doing just to try to drum up as much interest as possible. I've used some of the grant funding that we've received to kind of purchase incentive prizes. All of our students walk around with AirPods in their ears, well, they used to before the cell phone ban, like all the time, Dr. Deep, you're laughing at me.
I'm not, I'm not a headphone type of guy, so to me when I see these kids and here they have all these whatever stuff that goes on your ears like this and you keep talking to them and they don't hear you.
Yes. So we've purchased a pair of AirPods, and then I've purchased gift cards to local community businesses, like Brown Mug is their favorite. Sweet Time we did, and what we're going to do is once we have our participant pool, we're going to kind of just raffle off those prizes as a thank you and as an incentive for them participating in the program. We know it's gonna help them, so how can we kind of boost that participation to get them to buy into the program was our thought.
Is there any peer-to-peer reach out that might help in this cohort? Look at kids, you know, if you have somebody who's responded, maybe reach out to the class officers and see if they might be able to reach out on their social media, you know, they have their Snapchats and Instagrams and.
Everything, yeah.
That, that might be something to consider, and this year especially if you can put in the extra effort. This is a difficult year for many students to decide to go to college. And I've heard from so many parents out in the community who keep saying, if it is going to be this way, my kid doesn't want to go to college, they want to stay home. They want to go into the workforce or just put it off a year, so. Anything that we can do to encourage them, whether it's a two-year, four-year technical college, anything to further their education.
Definitely. Another thing I thought of was we did have quite a few students who really utilized the program last summer. And we could ask them to, you know, even just give a testimonial or a thirty-second video, you know, this was super helpful because Ms. Levesque answered me right away, or they sent me the link to where I needed, you know, those would be super helpful for these students. Because it's not just us saying, hey, this is great, you should sign up now, you know, sometimes they get sick of listening to us. Finally, I did just include an incredibly detailed report for you that I kind of touched on. It's just for you to look at if you want to look at it, it's very interesting information, but it's, it's a lot to weed through, so that's why I broke it down kind of the way that I did.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions from anybody else? Okay, thank you, and we'll move on to the next item, which is School Forest Committee Report on Nabokon Environmental Center fundraising. And that is Mike and Tim.
Well, good evening everybody, thank you for having us tonight. We just wanted to give you a little update on where we are and see where we can move forward. The last time we spoke to you was in January, I believe, right after we got our bid. And as you know, our, our bid was just slightly over seven hundred thousand, and our initial goal for fundraising was five hundred thousand. So we found ourselves a little bit behind the eight ball there. At that meeting, we told you that we had some possibilities of reducing some of the costs. And also we would continue fundraising. And we also had a commitment from Schwan's, who is the contractor, to, to build it to the point where, you know, it's all enclosed and not really ready to use, but we could move forward at a slower pace after the major construction was done. And that was gonna cost us in the five hundred seventy thousand or so, is that correct Tim? To get to that point. Okay, and so you kind of gave us the permission to go ahead to do that. However, we, Tim and the committee felt we really were not ready to sign that contract with Schwan's because we didn't have that money yet. And so we, we've kind of been working to continue to, to raise money. So since that time, we've had a few things come into play. Number one was the Spring Valley issue, but that seems to be resolved now, and we know exactly how much money we're getting from that, even though it wasn't the full, full amount. We still are appreciative of what we are getting from that. We also had two rather nice donations in, since January, another fifteen thousand from Remington's. And then we also got a sixteen thousand dollar donation from the Sonatec Foundation, which provides concrete. So basically, we're getting our concrete materials donated to us. We've also now run into the COVID issue, and we're pretty shy about going out to local places and continue to ask for money. We feel there's a lot of businesses in town and people are kind of hurting economically right now. So we've backed off on continuing to fundraise locally, unless there's someplace where we know we will continue to reach out there. So where this brings us now is, we are, we have five hundred fifty thousand raised. The committee would like to use some of our logging proceeds in that account. We'd like to take seventy-five thousand out of that account. Which would get us up to six hundred twenty-five thousand, which would get us past that point where the building can be built. And it won't be completely finished, but it would, would get us to the point where we can continue after that. And so that's really our first request tonight, is to allow us to use that money from our operating budget, I actually could say. We are comfortable using that, we're still leaving some in that account to continue for busing and other costs that we have yearly. And we also know that we have some logging, some logging coming up in the next two to five years, which will help replenish that account, so we'll have some operating money as we go forward. The second the second request we have is.
Mike, if I can just, just stop you there then?
Go ahead.
So, just for board members that aren't familiar, we have a timber harvesting policy. And when we have, the, the school forest is under management by the DNR. And when we do harvestings and thinnings, that money is set aside in a specific account for environmental education to include curriculum, professional development. And we've used it for maintenance and trail repairs. We put the generator in, we built the pavilion, and we also provide transportation to any teacher, one field trip a year to any teacher in the district. And Mike, I, I think we're approximately eighty-five thousand dollars is in the account, is that right Mike? I mean, those are, it's close.
That's correct, yes.
And so we're, we're asking to take that down to ten thou, have a balance of about ten thousand remaining. And Mike, what, what's an average year, what are we spending on transportation in an average school year?
Approximately five to seven thousand or.
So it would certainly cover us for at least a year. And, and I personally think that we can get, when we have new facilities, adequate facilities, I think we'll have, hopefully at that time, local supporters willing to help us offset that transportation.
Okay, and I also want to mention that we will continue to fundraise. It's just like I said, we're kind of pulling back a little bit right now because of the economic situation that we're in. But we also hope that once we start construction, some people will see that this is gonna be reality and that might give them a little more incentive to, to donate as well. So that is our first request tonight, is to allow us to use that money from our operating budget for construction. With that, we would be able to start this summer and into the fall. The second request is, I just would like to put it out there, we are wondering if the school board, school district would be willing to would be willing to pick up the rest of the tab, which would be another seventy-five thousand, maybe out of fund balance or whatever. It's just a request that we have, we'd like you to think about it, and you can talk it over if you have questions. It would help us get to that seven hundred thousand, and I think all of you are kind of in that same position that we are a lot of times. If you do something at home or whatever, you kind of want to do it and get it done, and get it done right, right away, and not have it drag out too long. With that, I'd like to either turn it over to Tim or other questions that you might have.
Yeah, I was wondering, is there a way that we could get a estimation on in-kind donations? Whether it's just a verbal agreement this time, I'm not sure if that's included in that figure that you guys provided.
So what I can share with the board is, we've been, the committee has been keeping track of all the donations. As part of the bid specification, we did have the general contractor put down what the subs were willing to reduce the cost by. And, you know, my recollection is they, they knocked something like twenty-five thousand dollars to twenty-eight thousand dollars off the bid price with contractor participated in-kind donations. Jim, we've had conversations with people like Kretz Lumber, MTE out of Menominee Tribal Enterprises. We've talked a little bit to them about doing in-kind, but again, you know, I think once once we get rolling and get a little bit away from COVID, we'd have a little better time doing that. I think people are, you know, I think if you specifically had an ask like a fireplace or whatever it might be, you might get people interested in doing those kinds of things.
Okay, does anybody else have any thoughts on? Okay, does anybody else have any thoughts on uh either one of those requests? Um, they are not, this is not an action item here tonight, so we're not going to vote on it, but I think it'd be good to discuss it.
Andy, this is Mike. Um, I I I don't see where uh the request from the committee for taking money out of fund balance is completely out of line. My guess is that to Tim's point and to Mike's point, that the in-kind donations might I I agree. I think once people start seeing brick and mortar going up and and see uh what's so far has just been a description actually becoming reality, yeah, it's probably going to get them off their wallets a little bit and and purses. And and they're going to see the, yes, the money that they've donated or others have donated is doing some good and making some contribution. So it'll help them to kind of say, yeah, I I need to do my part now and step up and and make a donation too. So I don't think the, I think, Mike, Wordio, you said roughly seventy-five thousand from fund balance, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I I I really don't see it ended up being that high of a number. I I can see taking something out of fund balance because this is legitimately a school-sponsored project. I mean, granted, it's being done through private funding, but it benefits the entire district. So to use some district funds to help accomplish the end goal, I I don't see that being a a off-the-wall request at all.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Wordio, I'd just like to say that I know you're a little reluctant to try to raise funds right now. Um, but for some people, they've gotten a stimulus check, a twelve-hundred-dollar check, and um, they didn't really need that check because they're still working or they're still doing whatever they were doing. And there's even some businesses who've gotten a payroll protection program check to cover two and a half months of wages of their employees, even though their business is still continuing uh as normal. Um, so I think there's a whole mixed bag out there. Certainly, there are plenty of people who needed that stimulus check and plenty of businesses who needed the grant, uh, the payroll protection program grant.
Yeah, I I agree with you, and um I think now that we kind of, I don't say we're on the downside or anything, but it seems like things are kind of leveling out a little bit, and people kind of know where they're going to be. And now we could maybe feel a little more comfortable starting to ask again certain people, certain businesses or people.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other comments? Because I'm kind of in agreement with uh Mike Boling that uh yes, the money could come out of fund balance. And let's um in let it, instead of building that building and not utilizing it, let's go ahead and finish it up so we can utilize it.
When do we need to decide by?
Um, Mr. Wordio or Tim Prunty, when would you like this decided by?
I I'd like to move it forward, Andy, if it's okay for discussion and action for the end of the month. Um, I know that talking with um the Schwanz uh family, they're they're already moving to their midsummer projects. And so um as we delay that, you know, we might get out of their building schedule. They're still um, by the sounds of it, um, quite busy.
Yes, okay. Um, were there any other comments? Jim Balzer, I thought maybe you had a comment there, but did not unmute?
No, you guys uh brought up what I was thinking too, so good job.
Okay. Um, okay, so we'll just move that ahead to the uh next board meeting.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we'll go on to uh possible action items and consideration of classroom projector purchase.
I move the board accept the bid of eighteen thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars from Tierney Brothers, Inc. for twenty-two classroom projectors.
I'll second it. Any questions or comments on this?
Um, the only question I got, um, Mark, uh, I see you're on here, so thanks for for joining us. Um, the bids were all pretty close. Um, I'd see between uh Tierney Brothers and and CDW. CDW, I'm familiar with, uh, Camera Corner Connecting Point. I'm familiar with them because of of past business. Uh, Tierney Brothers, I'm I'm not too sure, but we're within a couple of hundred dollars of everything here. So is it, is this all very comparable equipment, I take it?
Yes, it's all the exact same piece of equipment. Thanks for asking. Um, the Tierney Brothers, we've done a lot of work with in the past as far as the smart boards and everything. They've put, they've helped us with everything. When I do ask them a lot for bids and and they typically are a little bit higher, I was customer, you know, quite surprised that they were do a competitive bid on these projectors, but that is what we've used them for in the past. So not too surprised, but it was nice for them. A funny little story is that CDW put their bid at eight twenty-five, and within ten minutes, Tierney Brothers came in and was wondering if somebody knew somebody and uh put the fifty cent lower bid in. But that was the only funny story out of that whole thing. But um, no, we've done a lot of work with Tierney Brothers and uh as well as the rest of them. I'm very comfortable with all four of these people.
Yeah, I'm just not familiar with the name I had, so I'm just curious point, but thank you for the explanation.
Yes, thanks for asking.
Where are these going to be installed?
Um, they're spread out between all the buildings, high school, middle school, and the three elementaries. Um, I don't have the breakdown in front of me, but it was like seven at the high school, five at, five or six at the middle school, and the rest between the three elementaries. Try and get them updated as much as possible to keep the circulation and the new, the products going through there instead of any one building getting too aged. We like to circulate the product, keep it updated.
Good job.
Okay, any other questions or comments? And Mary Kay, we'd go ahead with a roll call, and if you'd all unmute so she can get your vote, that would be good.
Balzer?
Yes.
Bolting?
Yes.
Deep?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Newfeld?
Yes.
Payet?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes. Uh, we'll go on to item B, consideration of WIAA contract renewal for twenty twenty slash twenty twenty-one.
I move the board approve the twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one WIAA membership contract renewal.
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments?
Uh, Andy, I do have a question. Do we have any type of contract? Is it going to be, does this cost? Uh, I I don't recall from the past what we have done before.
It does not, Danny. The document that was um uploaded, if you look right in the um center there, it'll say, remember, membership fees have been eliminated. So all you need is approval from your district to be a member.
Why didn't I read that earlier? I'm so sorry.
We can always teach her to guide you.
I read that many times, and I just didn't see that. My apologies.
No problem.
Okay, any other questions or comments? And let's uh go ahead and do a, I I guess we can just do a voice vote on this, if you'd all like to unmute. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right.
Aye. And any opposed? Okay, that passes, and we'll go on to item C, consideration of health insurance renewal for twenty twenty slash twenty twenty-one.
I move the board accept the health insurance renewal with WA Trust as specified in their rate renewals.
I'll second that.
Okay. And comments?
Andy, this is Danny. Uh, I will recuse myself from discussion as well as the vote.
Okay. And any other questions or um, Tim, I assume you probably have something to say about this?
Yeah, Andy, I do if if the board would indulge me. Um, if um, I'd like to have you start with the um new employee presentation. So we'll do the Anago Insurance one O one. And if you open that and then go down to slide number five. Is it four or five? It says health insurance plan, employees pay twelve percent of the premium.
Yep, it's slide five.
Yep, okay. So basically, we're going from uh two plans to one plan, and I'll get into a little bit of details. But here's the real basics of it. So we have um a five thousand, ten thousand dollar plan is what I'm proposing with twenty percent co-insurance above the five thousand, ten thousand for the next five thousand, ten thousand. Employees pay twelve percent of the premium. The district then covers the next thirty-six hundred or seventy-two hundred in a district-wide HRA. And what I want the board to remember is we've got about one point two million dollars in fund balance, designated fund balance, covering this portion of the health insurance. So right now, we've got probably about ninety-eight percent of our potential liability tied up in providing this benefit. So essentially, this high deductible healthcare plan is really a fourteen hundred slash twenty-eight hundred dollar deductible. The district HRA covers the next. Um, back in March, when we were looking at the renewal, we had utilization of this portion of the health insurance plan um utilized at about twenty-five percent. We're funding it to the tune of about thirty-two hundred dollars for a family, sixteen hundred dollars for a single. So essentially, we're buying down insurance premium. Do board members understand that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But then what I'm suggesting we do is um this next piece, once employees reach to um the ten, five thousand, ten thousand dollar deductible, there would be co-insurance on this particular plan. And we've had this plan in place before. Um, I'm suggesting that the the district fund the co-insurance. So we're going to fund that thousand to two thousand um dollar additional deductible. There's the potential, if I look at this year's utilization, of somewhere between forty and fifty to fifty-five individuals that might exceed that number. And um in the memo, if you want to open up the memo, I'm calling this a hybrid two plan because this was plan number two that we've had for probably five years. But we have always given an HSA contribution. We had a seven and a half percent rate increase across the board by going down to one plan and discontinuing the HSA contribution on this plan. And then backfilling the HRA as part of the twenty percent co-insurance, the net effect to the budget will be a zero dollar increase. Am I making sense to you at all, or is this um, this kind of?
No, Tim, it's making sense, but it also sounds like you crunched a whole lot of numbers to get to this point.
Yeah, and and I I also want the board to know that we were, we were, people on plan number two last year received a hundred and twelve thousand dollars worth of HSA contributions. And we're taking that away from those participants. But then we're also backfilling the savings into our HRA plan for potential co-insurance utilization. And and why I personally like the HRA, that's district money that if we don't utilize it, we get to carry it over and we don't give it out as profit, so to speak, in insurance premium. So I think it's a a real good vehicle for us to carry over funds. And and you know, I I talked to you about sixteen hundred forty-four dollars is the single contribution to the HRA. Thirty-two hundred eighty-eight dollars is the family contribution. And that's providing almost double the benefit to those families. So we get a lot of bang for our buck with that HRA vehicle.
Okay, so to the employee, to our employee, they're they're essentially the same on what they're paying out?
Um, people on plan one will incur a cost savings, their premium, the, I think, if you look at the one of the rate sheets, and we can go to those, um, let's see. I think it says USDA corrected renewal rate, and let me just see if I've got the right one there. No, that's a retiree one, I'm sorry.
Then you've got a couple of sheets to prepare, uh, one set of fifteen hundred dollars and a one with twenty thousand, one that says twenty-five hundred?
It's five thousand, ten thousand is what we need to be looking at, Mike.
Okay, thank you. Got it.
Okay, we're, this year, if you look at the current, we had um a hundred and three people, a hundred and three people on that plan. So those hundred and three people will not be receiving an HSA contribution this year. We had a little bit more people, um, I think it was a hundred and, I'd have to get my numbers out, but we had about a hundred and twenty-five people on plan number one, which um received a seven and a half percent rate increase, and they had no co-insurance. So those people will actually receive a a reduction in their premium because we're going to backfill using the HRA for the co-insurance to reduce their cost.
Okay.
Now, we reviewed this with the insurance committee, and um I think the people that are on plan number one, and and Julie, you were there, um, I think they were surprisingly pleased to see no additional cost in premium. Um, I happen to be one of the ones on plan two, and um I know that I'm going to be out the thirteen fifty. But I I think it's necessary to um hold the line on the budget. So um, I think it's in the best interest to get down to one plan for future um years. And we're going to simplify it by um, our employees do a lot of paying right now, and we do some reimbursing. And we're going to try to eliminate the reimbursement and and have um our third-party HSA administration do the paying directly. But that's getting pretty granular for this group. We have um, if the board approves, we have uh employee open enrollment starting um as early as Thursday.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Andy, one additional comment I I do want to mention, and it's in the memo, that we we put it out to bid to at least four providers. And Security Health and WEA Trust were the only two that came back and were willing And Security Health and WEA Trust were the only two that came back and were willing to bid. We have, um, several cases that, um, our claims to premiums paid is running at about 105% right now. So we must not be an attractive book of business at this particular juncture.
Okay. Okay, with that, Mary Kay, we have a, yeah, uh, most on that?
Yes.
Okay. And we'll go ahead, roll call vote.
Okay. Boldy?
Yes.
Deep?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Newfeld?
I'm going to recuse myself.
Hyatt?
I recuse.
Closer?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes. And so we will move on to the consideration of proposal for social worker position.
Okay, Heidi, take it away. Heidi?
Heidi who? Heidi, get up here now, please.
I'm trying to, I was trying to get my mic turned on, it kept flipping away, um. Do you want me to share my screen, or do you guys, did you have an opportunity to look at the position analysis proposal?
We, I've seen that.
Okay.
Yep, it's, it's online for the meeting stuff, so.
Okay. So I guess, um, do you have questions about it, or what would you like me to dive into about it? You want me to give you the history? Do you want me to give you, like? You tell me what you need, because it's written there, um. I guess, you tell me if you'd like me to give you the, the reason why it's up there, or you feel you've read it and understand.
And some background as to how it has worked in other school districts, and why we are going to do it here?
Okay.
Examples.
Yeah, so, well, there's a lot of districts that have social workers, that are, there's a lot of districts that don't. Um, the, the state has, um, over the last couple of years, has put money into trying to create social work positions in districts because of the increase in mental health issues, the increase in social service calls and involvement in families throughout the state. And so it's kind of, the mental health part has kind of grown, and the social part has, has kind of, um, grown alongside that. And so some examples would be, um, you're, you're just talking about examples of why we would need it? Okay, so when you look at, um, what DPI has put out with regards to having a really good pupil services program, you look at it from a three-pronged approach, which includes school psychologists, counseling, and school social work. And right now, and, and so it's like a Venn diagram, and each of them have their, their roles to play in a district. We haven't had a social worker since I've been here. I don't know that Anago honestly has ever had one. Um, maybe Tim could give some history on that, but, um. And so what has happened is the load becomes, um, on counseling, it goes to the principals, it goes to the teachers to try to fill that void or gap, linking community resources with school resources, and having that be a continuous kind of model that we do. Um, the state has provided some funding in a variety of ways to try to support districts who have not had social workers. And we're one of those districts that haven't, and so they actually, for the first year, well, and any subsequent years, any increased costs that you incur by adding a social worker, they will cover 50% of that, um, of the increase in cost. So that's one incentive to do that. Um, again, it's only the increase. So we get the big bang the first year we hire, but we actually don't even see that money for a year anyway. So we kind of have to front, we have to front the bill, okay, if we're going to pay for that. Um. So, and, and also, the mental health grants have, have expanded as well. And, um, I know that Andy had a question regarding, because that's been out there, these mental health grants. The first year that they came out, three years ago, we applied and we did not get it. And that was to have a, what we would call a mental health coordinator, kind of a quasi-social worker, to try to help develop the mental health framework, which is something that DPI has developed, and schools are expected to develop as they grow, is this mental health framework, um, and pathway. And so we didn't get it that year. Um, they offered it again the next year, we did not apply. Um, but now they're two-year grants. So the next year that we can apply is this coming year. So in the spring of 2021, they're going to have the next two-year cycle. So there'll be some funding available then as well, if and when we apply for that. So it really, um, in this position analysis, what I wanted to capture was we're not looking necessarily at only a traditional social worker, and you can see, what I included in the description is straight from DPI's, what a social worker's job is, okay? We are, what I'm doing is, I'm, I'm trying to coordinate both work and this mental health coordinator, um, to help us develop our pathway. Because right now, the load on our system, it's, we can't do anything well. I mean, we try, we've got a lot of things going in our district, from the SCL, social emotional learning, trauma-sensitive, but the load falls to counseling, again, principals to, to be that connection to the community. And, um, so that's really why I've been researching, working with DPI, to try to figure out how we can fund this. Aspiris, um, I worked with Medford. Medford has a very big program that's been developed over the last four years. And they are partnering with Aspiris, uh, the Community Health Foundation, um, to grow that program. And so I got a lot of information from there, but we're at, we're at the basement, I'll just say right now, as far as the people to support it. Right now, Medford, the same-sized district, or even a little smaller than us, has three social workers. We have zero social workers. And if you look at our data, um, to say how many calls we get, um, I put that in there from social services. Um, that was just this last year, we have multiple years of what, um, and that's really the primary function of that social worker, um, is to, to connect those communities and those families and those, in that tier two, tier three, and those, that situation. But we really want to have this person develop our systems internally with our school and our community, um, to be able to really have a fluid, um, pathway between our systems. And that's where I, I think we're missing right now, to help us take, take it to the next level.
And if I could just add. Okay, thank you. If I could just add that, um, the timing to bring this to your attention seemed really appropriate, given, um, the state that our community, and really the nation and world is in. But, you know, we know that families have left the area, we don't know if they'll return. We certainly hope that they do, but, um, teachers will tell you, we feel that our students are going to need, need us in the fall, or as soon as they can return, more than ever. And, um, whether or not we have a social worker on staff, there will be plenty of wraparound work that needs to be done to support these kids who haven't been in school. Um, so that's one point I wanted to make. The other was that, as you know, I serve on the Community Health Foundation Board here, and, um, I won't speak for them, other than I did let them know I would share with you. They are very interested in helping us with this position. Um, when we talk about mental health crisis, that's where they want to put their support. And you may know they discontinued the Healthy Kids, Bright Kids Grants, because while those were wonderful, they were, um, so limited in scope compared to what a social worker could do. Um, so I know that there is interest in helping us from their perspective as well.
Um, maybe Jim can help me out a little here, um, but as I read this description and I heard Heidi, it does not look like you're looking for just a typical social worker type of thing, but somebody who is sort of trained with some mental health pediatric type of thing. Am I misconstruing this at all, Jim?
So my big concern is that this is quite the undertaking for one person to have, starting a brand-new department. Um, so my question is, when would we be rolling out the second position? That's the first thing I thought of when looking at this, because one person isn't going to be able to sustain this.
Right. And, and the training that they need, the experience, you just can't have somebody who's green behind their ears just come up here and start dealing with this stuff. And you're talking about both your, you're looking at the social issues, but you're looking at the mental health issues, and that takes, uh, special consideration and training.
Absolutely. Um, and, uh, while, while we would post this and look for a candidate that has, um, some of those skill sets, we also have somebody who's been working in our schools, who is, who, um, who has been providing our onsite therapy, who I'm hoping would apply, um, because that person has both social work and mental health background. Um, and just to your point, and, and that might not be, they might take a different job, we'd still need that, we'd still need that. And so I want to be really clear that one person can't do this job. I will go back to that Venn diagram to say, this is a collective, so pupil services is not, this is so wrapped up in our universal supports and our tiered supports, that it's a, it's a team effort. There is no one person that's going to be able to come in and develop a pathway, or, um, provide all the services to those. It is, it is with counselors, it's with school psychologists, it's with principals, it's with teachers. Um, the missing, and they're doing that already, that's the thing, is that we have counselors, um, and psychs, and, and these, and principals who are doing these jobs. We need to, we need the ability to streamline it so that we can just make it even more effective, and having, having those connections that can be consistent for families, um, and, and between our community. I mean, we have a lot, we have North Central Healthcare, Aspiris, we have private entities that are all trying to do this. And so absolutely, to your point, it's not like we would, it, it has to be the right person, but it also has to be a doable position that maybe grows. And like I said, in Medford, they started with one, and now after four years, they have three. This isn't something that, you know what I mean, like, this is, this is one piece of the puzzle that we need to figure out how to help us.
Do you think you'd be able to put together a three-year plan for us to look at? Or I know this can seem quite insurmountable at this time with what we're looking at. Um, but I'd be curious to see if you'd be able to put something together, what your projections would be, and how you'd like to expand on this position.
And maybe hear from the people in Medford.
What's that?
And maybe hear from the people in Medford, Heidi.
I have, I have all of their stuff, absolutely, I can, absolutely, because that's kind of what I, and, and I'm, why I came to you first, though, is it's pointless for me to, to create a proposal, a three-year proposal with data and graphs and everything, to go to Aspiris if we don't have this position supported by the district. You guys have to approve that this is something that we want. And so that was why I came to you first, and why I wanted to get on the board, was so that you guys know and approve this position, and then we'll go out and we'll, I couldn't do it that, the other way, because it wouldn't matter, right? So.
So this position be not just a social work, but you'd call it a mental health, social worker combination? What, what do you call them?
Well, as part of the DPI grant, they call them mental health navigators, like that's how they, or like a, uh, that, that's the term they use. So, um, I'm not saying that we would even have to, we would probably include in a job, in the job description exactly what we're looking for, but I think that we could, um, still just call it a school social worker, but then in that job description, really be detailed in the expectations that we have, or what we're seeking, um, to help create that mental health, you know, that pathway. I don't know that we would have to call it something different, because social workers can do that work too. Right?
From what you're describing, call it what, what you're saying the job is. So I'd much rather be upfront with it and use it as such, rather than saying a social worker. And then, you know, when you have proposals or candidates, then you don't want to backpedal and say what you're, uh, looking for, it's not a traditional social worker. What you're describing is a very unique position.
Right, yeah, it is, and I, and that's fine, I can, we can, I kind of, in the description, on the position analysis, I think I called it, I didn't pull it up, mental health navigator, or something, I can use the, the language from DPI. I said school basic mental health coordinator is what I, yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Good enough, whenever the chair's ready.
What's that?
Whenever the chair is ready for his motion.
Yes.
Wait a minute, Heidi?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say, um, as long as I can remember, there has never been a social worker in the district. And before you brought up how they increase their number, one will never be enough. It would be great, yeah, building could have their own, but I think it's a great start. And I, I just think that this mental health issue is so important. And so I think, go with it, find a good name for it.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay.
Um. Andy, I had just, just something that crossed my mind. I agree with Jim when I first looked at this, uh, that we're going to see more than just one person. Uh, one person can't fulfill this by no stretch of the imagination. Uh, we're going to have to grow this into more than just one, one position to be filled. However, when I look at the funding source, um, whenever we just heard a moment ago that we need to watch our funding and watch our spending, how, how, Andy, uh, should we look at making this sustainable for year after year? Uh, Tim, if you have something you want to say, uh, on how we can look at sustaining this, I just don't want to start something and then say, oh, well, now where are we going to find the money for this? Whenever we are so, uh, so tight with the finances and the funding right now. So looking at it from that perspective, yes, I want this, yes, I can support this. However, with not knowing where the money's going to come from to fund this position, I have, I have to say no, uh, at this point. Personally.
Danny, I would say that, you know, between Heidi and Julie, they, and Kelly, they need to look at every single position as those positions become available. That, um, rather than just blindly fill and refill positions, and Heidi in particular, we go round and round about something called maintenance of effort, and I don't want to get into it. It's about the federal requirements with special education. This position receives categorical aid under a special act. So we can, um, look at how Heidi is using her general fund monies and Fund 27. And anytime a position becomes available, she needs to evaluate the benefits of a social worker versus, let's say, um, anything from a classroom special education teacher to an IA. And she has to focus her Fund 21, or $27, which we are committed to from one year to the next, to the greatest good.
Yep, and, and so as Tim's talking about, 59%, I believe we, um, 59% of that position is, um, is, uh, up for categorical aid from special education. And so that's a good thing, because then when we draw, if I draw down in a certain area, which, um, this is a priority, um, then I can sustain that, because our special ed numbers and our, our enrollment is going down, and our abilities, um, how we are looking at evaluation and staffing students in, we are getting more in line with where we should be. And so that, and, and there's no way that and, and there's no way that I want to cut people, but I look ahead to say, okay, um, who's retiring? Um, do I need to fill that position, how can I fill that position differently? And I was just gonna say, before Tim said anything, it's also about priorities. It's about our priorities in our district, and how we wanna use our funds, and putting our money and, and where we say is, it's important, and so I'm gonna do everything in my power to make this sustainable, and use grant funds to build upon it, like, that's how I look at it, is that I'm not gonna, that's why I put unknown, I'm not gonna say Aspiris is gonna give us that money, now, did they put, they've committed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in Medford over the course of three years, and so that's something that they can, but they, their district is maintaining their first social worker, like, that's just a thing that we need to do, in my opinion, it, that might not be where that priority lies, but I will do everything in my power, and work with Tim, whether he thinks that I do or not, um, to draw down where we need to, to make our priorities what, what they need to be, so.
Okay, I think we, uh, still need a motion on this, right, is that correct, Mary Kay?
Yes.
Yes, we haven't.
Uh, would somebody like to make a motion?
Sure. I move that the board approve the creation and hiring of a candidate for the mental health navigator slash school social worker with mental health faculty. Mental health training.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, and with that, is there any further questions or discussion?
So no, no plan available before we vote on this?
What, what was that, I didn't get that?
So no three, so no three-year plan available beforehand, I wouldn't mind seeing a plan as well, I mean, comparatively to other programs, I know it's not the same, but, um, if we're looking at being tight on our budget, we had talked about the Karen Maps, um, Community Engagement Program, and did not continue that program any further as well. So if there was like that program, or another program that we could, um, compare costs to, and sustainability?
Um, I can put together whatever you need, but I don't, the social worker isn't PD, a social worker is whether you want to have a district social worker who is providing services, like, really, you're approving the position, if we aren't able to fill it or fund it, I guess, I mean, that's, I, I can put together however many years what our goals would be, we have lots of data, we have lots of, but I guess I'm looking at that a little differently, um, or maybe I don't understand your question.
Yeah, I'm thinking that, uh, we have, we want to see that three-year plan, um, but I'm also thinking that, uh, the board, the majority of the board here is thinking, move ahead with this, with this now. But we still wanna see a three-year plan, 'cause obviously, some of us don't think one social worker's gonna be enough.
Yeah, that's exactly it, Andy, and plus, you do have a motion on the floor that either vote up or down, and then can figure out the other stuff that goes along with it at a later date.
Yes. So any other comments, questions? And if we unmute, Mary Kay, would you go ahead with a roll call?
Okay. Deep?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Mead?
No.
Payet?
No.
Newfeld?
Yes.
Falsor?
Yes.
Building?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And so that passes, and we will go on to the next item, which is, uh, report for resignations.
I move the board approve the resignations of Drew Pearson, technology education teacher, and Veronica Krieger, school psychologist, effective at the end of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments on these resignations? Okay, then if we unmute, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And any opposed? Okay, and that passes, and that takes us to, uh, our next meeting will be June ninth, six P.M. Hopefully in the Anago Middle School IMC, we'll see how that goes. Um, and with that, moving motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Heidi.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, I guess that's it for the evening, thank you for everybody.
Good night, everybody, thank you, everyone, good night, good night.